I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, for the committees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi, everybody, and welcome. We will start with public participation. Joe, do you have your phone?
Yes, I do.
No, I have that.
Okay.
We have two signed up, so I'm gonna call up Gary. Is Gary here?
Yes.
Gary, come on up. State your full name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Right over here?
Yes, sir.
Gary Crigliano, 131 Longview Road. Let me know when I'm ready to start.
Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Yep.
You good? Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to touch base on to an issue that appears to be tonight's topic: transgenderism. Allowing a male who identifies as a girl to use the same bathroom. I know many parents with daughters are not only uncomfortable and outraged with this, but some can't sleep at night. Why? It's opened the door to a number of threats that we were all well aware of. We have had, we have all heard, read way too many cases of sexual assaults taking place throughout the country, even in our own state. We have seen firsthand across country of girls who have suffered multiple injuries from biological males participating in girls' sports. The male body and the female body are different. Bones structure all the way to the brain. The proof is in the chromosomes. As it's in our best interest to take care of majority of children, prevent cases such as sexual harassment, sexual exploitation, physical injuries, mental illness, depression, rape, or even attempted rape, why would the school board be so idiotic not to take measures into protecting all children when they can do so? We can still cater to the small percentage with using something so simple as common sense. It's just because the superintendent signed a deal with a corrupted government receiving federal and government funding, not reading all the fine print with unsafe measures for the children come with, accepting government funds, making schools not public, and now government-run schools. Last year, we fought a losing battle with masks. Why? It was all on the SR funding. The superintendent signed to accept money, all with the intention of masking our children. We already now have seen the spike in mental illness. It's caused by speech problems, suicide rates, and at an all-time high with depression, et cetera. Next, there should be zero tolerance for equity and social justice in school systems. Teachers should be teachers, not educators, when it comes to equity, social justice, and involving themselves into speaking to children about how they identify themselves or exploring their sexuality. That's the parent's job to do so, and the parent's job only, in the privacy of their own home. Equity is something that is poured into the buildings to increase their value. Reducing a person's value to something that needs to be fixed and emotionally renovated is just downright insulting. Kids deserve to learn science, actual science, not junk science, actual history, reading, math, cursive, art, music, and anything else in the realms of academics. I also believe our children deserve to feel safe. I don't agree with, I don't agree that within the school system, teachers to be mental health experts or psychologists. Where are the parents? Where are the guidance counselors? The notice that is in the children's contact parents to guide them into getting their kids the help they need. Schools are not mental health clinics or places where adults have to pander to everyone's ideologies.
Sir, can you please finish?
It's sad to say that this is the rise in the parents that need to speak and hear through third parties, are afraid that their children to school. We already have seen decreases statewide. They are exploring homeschooling and other privacy school systems as well. People are seeing what's going on in the state throughout the country. The SR3 federal mandates have yet to be released. However, I'm sure include the COVID-19 emergency use authorization vaccine mandates, possibility of masking, which the Lanza report has already taken the woke CDC and chewed it up and spit it out, and that's actual science-proof clinical trials and peer reviews. SEL advancement, testing and segregation, and other toxic-
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. What I have here tonight is, basically, I'm leaving everybody pamphlets of educational things that you probably won't find on Google, because Google, as we all know, big tech suppresses information from the public. So I am gonna leave this here for all of you, and I please advise you-
Sir, actually, can you put it on the counter or on the side, please?
This side?
Yeah, on one of the counters on the side. Thank you, to your left.
Okay.
Thank you, I have Janice. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, Janice Persico, 31 Rodeo Drive. I am here as a parent of a transgender student at Massey. I am here to support the transgender and gender nonconforming youth policy that you are voting on tonight. The Department of Education writes, "A school policy setting forth general principles for supporting transgender students can help set clear expectations for students and staff and avoid unnecessary confusion, invasions of privacy, and other harms." And that comes from the guidelines set forth by the American Academy of Pediatrics, and that was years ago. We're behind. This is why we need this policy. Why do we have policies? Why do we have a policy committee here? It's for legal reasons. You need these things for legal reasons. That's why you have policies. They're guidelines for teachers and staff and families coming in. At a winter policy committee meeting over this past winter, a member, Board of Ed member, said that we need our policies to align with Connecticut state laws, and that is exactly right. This policy is a reiteration of Connecticut state law that has been in place since 2017. At our last meeting, there were several people who spoke about the high rate of suicides among transgender people, and this hits very close to home for me, which I have spoken about before. We are almost one of those statistics. It was exactly one year ago this week, my son missed the end of the school year because he was at Yale. He had run out of hope. I'm sorry, this is really hard. I don't care who you are, what political side you are on, I pray that none of you ever have to kneel on hospital floor and pray to God to just infuse your child with hope. I was grasping for any lifeline of hope for my child and our family. In this policy, this is one of those lifelines that we need, that we needed. So when you are voting later on tonight, please think of that. Like, why are you here? Why are you sitting at these tables? It's for our children. So please think of that when you're voting later tonight, and please vote with open hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? Come on up, please. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Mandy Wall, 95 Bart Road, and my pronouns are they/them/their's. I am one of only a handful of openly trans adults in Monroe. Believe it or not, there are trans kids in Monroe, but they don't come out until after they leave. I know, because I'm one of those kids, and I know at least four or five other students from my graduating class at Massey who didn't come out as trans until after they left Monroe. Why? They didn't feel safe or welcomed here, so they suffered and silenced and left at the first opportunity they had. Yeah, you can set up a support group, or whatever you want to call it, for trans kids, but that doesn't fit, but that doesn't fix aspects of a greater, their system that misgenders and deadnames them, like their school ID or being forced into gender segregated activities that don't align with their identity. No child should have to wait to live their authentic selves because they're scared. I had to wait, and I'm still dealing with the consequences, and I have a supportive family. Not every kid has that luxury. As for respecting a trans student's decision to not come out to their parents right away, I'm here to tell you, as a living, breathing, trans person, that most of us do eventually come out to our parents. Many of us choose to come out to close friends or siblings first, so we can build up a support system before we come out to our parents. That's exactly what I did, that's exactly what my non-binary partner did, that's exactly what most of my trans friends did. Are there trans kids who come out to their parents first? Absolutely. But that's their personal decision, which should be respected as much as another trans kid's decision to not come out to their parents right away. I hear too much of the suicide statistic that more than half of trans youth will attempt suicide, and not nearly enough of the statistic from the Trevor Project and the CDC Youth Risk Prevention Task Force. From a 2019 survey on improving mental health outcomes for LGBTQ youth, that the likelihood of trans child will attempt suicide will drop by over 40% if there is just one accepting adult in their life. That same study, which can be found on the Trevor Project's website, that found that less than one in three trans youth find their home life to be gender-affirming and supportive, while a little more than half find support and gender affirmation in their school environment. Schools have the power where to be welcoming and affirming to all students, and this board needs to recognize that power by voting yes for this policy. What statistic does this board want to be a part of? The one that affirms or supports trans youth, or the one that will increase the risk of childhood suicide attempts?
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm Michelle Orr, 12 Marsh Con Lane. Before I read what I prepared for the meeting tonight, I was here at the last meeting, speaking on the transgender policy, and I outlined the certain topics that I have issue with, not the entire fact that we should have a policy. And I would hope not to have to say what I'm about to say, but there were comments made at the last meeting during public participation that implied people that oppose the policy don't care about the well-being of transgender kids. The speaker went as far as using a recent tragedy of a seven-year-old dying in a fire in Norwalk, and said, "Fast forward several years from now, and let's say it's a kid in high school that is transgender, are we going to be judgmental?" I'm sorry, but I'm not the type of person that can let that go, okay? I'm a parent, okay? This appalling and baseless comment undermines what we're all trying to achieve by openly discussing policies that affect children in our schools. I perceive this as an intimidation and shaming tactic, and quite frankly, the fact that it was said discredited everything the speaker said before and after that comment. Like I said, I'm a parent. I never want to see any child, gay, straight, trans, black, white, purple, I don't care, hurt or bullied, I would be the first one to stand up for a child that's bullied, okay? That's not what this is about. Let's try to show some respect as we're here talking to one another, because that's the most important example we can set for our children. They are watching, like that gentleman said last meeting. After listening to some of the other speakers, one thing is very clear to me: mental health and suicide prevention need to be at the forefront, and I honestly don't see either as concerns that are exclusive to transgender kids. I hope we're all painfully aware that there has been a severe decline in the mental health of adolescents in general over the past couple of years. You all have a responsibility to pass policies that protect the entire student population. I don't see the policy as written doing so, and therefore, I would like to see it voted down and address, the language addressed a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on up. Hi, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Jamie Carell, 22 Canterbury Lane. Hi, so I don't have, I didn't come up with statistics or anything like that, I'm just here to talk about the transgender policy. As a person who also is transgender, did not feel comfortable enough to come out in high school, but then I have now been in college. I literally graduated from Massey last year, I've been in college for a year, and now, after being there, have felt comfortable enough to come out. And it has shown me just how impactful it is to have an environment outside of the home that people can be, or children can be comfortable in. I think one of the biggest things with this policy is, of course, it's not asking teachers to become experts on all sorts of mental health and everything in the LGBTQ, everything under that. They just need to be knowledgeable, so that the students have a support system to go to, because especially there are a lot of cases where students don't have a great home life, and their parents aren't really that accepting, and if they have no adults to go to, sure, friends can only do so much, but I know that firsthand that it really, it's nice to have people your age to support you, but it can be really beneficial to have people older than you, especially ones that are important in your life, that can help you be who you want to be. And having to go through Massey without that, I mean, I suffered for four years in Massey, and then, you know, three more before that in middle school, it's just been, it's just pain. So if you really want to support children in general, then this policy is very crucial. It's the bare minimum crucial for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up. Oh, hold on. Sorry, go ahead, come on up. Hi, you can just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Salem Cronin. I am 14 years old, and I came out as non-binary in the beginning of 2020. So I've been out for two years to my parents, my family, my friends, and I am very lucky to have a very accepting, like, family, and I'm very lucky to have a support system. I have a lot of friends that don't have that, and it's very, very tough for them, because they only have friends to go to, and they can't go to teachers and ask them to call them their preferred name or pronouns, because their teachers will just ignore it and say that, like, we can't do that, and they'll not do it. And it kind of sucks, because they can't be themselves, and they kind of just sit there in agony. I don't know what else to say. They suffer a lot, and I want to be able to help them, but I try my hardest, so I'm thinking talking might help.
Okay, thank you. There were two others, come on down. Hi, name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Teresa Olliar. My address is 133 Old Castle Drive. Three minutes is definitely not enough, but, okay. The last time I was here, I spoke about the tremendous support of our school district and showing up in force to come build the playground, volunteering their time, coming outside of school. It was tremendous. I saw Joe and Jack again out of school, about 7 o'clock at night, on a night, but it was at a funeral service for a student that went to Massey, so it was a little bit different of a situation. And that speaks to their support, that speaks to their dedication to the students of our community. And for me, I walked away, I'm sure lots of educators, I can only assume walk away, whenever a student leaves here, have we prepared them? Have we been a soft landing? Have we done enough? Have we done enough? Have we done enough? Are they prepared? And this is a student that did make it past Massey, but by '24, struggled. And I know the answer for me was that I had not done enough. I had not done enough for that person, because I chose fear over my faith. I chose a lack of understanding for some of the things that this person was going through. I will specify, it was not anything to do with our policy tonight, but it doesn't matter. And I chose, will this harm my other children? Will what they're going through harm my children? Are my children more important? And so I turned my back on this person, and I will live to regret that, and I will never let it happen again for my life. But there's a famous quote, you might attribute it to Roosevelt, but in Monroe, it's attributed to Joe Cobza, and it says, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." Why are we doing nothing? If you don't like bathrooms, if you don't like sports, if you are not comfortable with this entire policy tonight presented before you, do something. Do record-keeping. Do a roadmap where pronouns or new names can be permanently allowed. I know they're done on a case-by-case basis. My children have friends who have been able to change their names. They have to know that's a possibility. Their parents have to know that's a possibility. If there's a policy, it is standard. It is standardized. It is in CAVE's best practices that we follow. I'd also like to understand why we're not hearing from, more from our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our school counselors, our nurses, our coaches, our psychologists, our teachers. Why are we not hearing from them? And I do hope that, on your own time, that the Board of Ed has spoken to all of those. I think that we would be one of the first districts, that's honest, we'd be one of the first districts in our state to really do this. But you know what? We were one of the first, we were at the forefront of school security. And so when they posted map after last week saying, "These are people doing more school measurements, new safety measurements," and we're not doing that, I'm proud we're not on that list, because I know we're already doing everything we can. Because one last quote, since somebody else went over. There's another famous Joe Cobza quote that I'm gonna totally chop up. There are not one, there's not one 100% solution. There are 99 1% solutions, and I am aware that does not add up to 100. Go ask Joe about it. This is just one part of a solution. It will not save everybody, it will not save everything, it will not make everything perfect. I actually don't think I could have saved the person who passed away last week, but I know I wouldn't have added to what he was going through. I know I could have lessened it, and that's the part that I can't sit by and watch. Don't do nothing.
Thank you. Hi, name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Alison Sorel from 58 Harbey Lane. A little bit nervous, my first time, first time, long time. I'm a statistician, so I'm gonna come with some statistics. So I've heard a lot of really intense emotion tonight, tears, and a lot of feeling, and it's awesome that people have coming out and they're advocating for themselves and what they believe in. And it's across a lot of the topics that impact trans children and teens. But the reality is, five times more trans teens attempt suicide in a year than cisgender children. Three times more trans teens experience sexual violence than cisgender children. Five times more are threatened or injured with a weapon at school than cisgender children. Only 12% of trans kids say that their schools have a policy. So what's amazing to me is you have this experience that is so tragic for these children and these teens, and yet there is such a limited response that we have in our schools and in our society to help protect this marginalized and disproportionately affected group. I worked for a bank for many years, so I know how important policies are. They're really powerful guardrails that help us know what to do in certain situations, because not everyone can know what to do in every situation. There's a lot of, we have multitudes in our universe, and it's an amazing thing, but we don't know in every situation what to do. And that's what's so important about a policy, is it really gives us those rules, so that we know, when we experience different things, we have a touch point to know what's the appropriate way to interact with someone. Maybe we haven't in our past, and maybe we don't know what's a respectful way to do that. So I really ask the school board to consider this, consider the emotions that have come from trans people in our community, parents, and just concerned citizens that say, "This is really important to us. We feel really strongly to have this in place to protect and really just provide everyone an understanding of what is a supportive behavior and response in our schools." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Yes, come on down. Hi, sorry, name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Marissa Donnelly, 7 Hemlock Lane. I am not a statistician, and I have no numbers to throw at you. I am only gonna speak from the heart. I am not a parent of a transgender child, and it doesn't matter. I think we have an opportunity in Monroe to set an incredible standard and to protect this community that we all believe is an incredible, well, I'm learning today, lots of people believe is an incredible place. We only moved here a few years ago, and the sense of pride that so many people have in this town is incredible. So here we are at a crossroads, and we can make a decision that's gonna protect our kids, not just mine, all of ours. So when you're thinking tonight about this policy, please recognize the help and the assistance and the love and the support that we can provide to all of our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Hi, state your name and address for the record, please.
Maura Cronin, 90 Bagburn Hill Road.
Go ahead.
So I do not speak publicly, but my daughter just did it herself, Salem. Very proud of her getting up here, and I'm here to support this transgender policy. I just, I really pray that we have, can come together as a community, and our kids need to come first. We've been, I heard Janice speaking earlier about the mental health issues. We've had a horrible experience with my child for a few years now, being non-binary and mental health and, you know, suicide attempts, and it's been hell, you know? And this is a kid who has been pretty easy all over life, and now it was very, very difficult to come to terms with all these changes and, you know, coming out to friends. And it's just, the support, thankfully, that we were able to reach out, we've been positively impacted by our community. We know a lot of people who haven't been, so if we can make it clear across the board that kids can come to school and know that they're safe, and they have, you know, administrators, teachers, support system at school that maybe they don't have at home, the support is so important. It's so important. I've learned so many things. I've been a nurse for 30 years, but I've learned so much in these last three years about the whole LGBTQ plus and transgender, and it's just, if anybody has questions, I know that my child is willing to help explain things to people and help educate in a very non-judgmental way. And if we can open up our hearts, please come to us. I just, knowledge is power, and I hope we can all get behind each other and support this policy. It's so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Hi, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, it's Rob Olliar. He/him/his, 133 Old Castle Drive. I guess I'm gonna come at, approach this a little different than everybody else has. I want to kind of put a little perspective on everything for, you know, anyone who is in opposition of this policy simply because they feel that there shouldn't be a policy specifically for any given group of people. I think for the most part, anybody in here would consider themselves to be Americans, and if you look back to when this country was first founded, you know, we have these things called the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and what are those? Those are policies, right? Those policies were put in place to protect what we believe were the group of people we wanted to protect at that point in time. Move forward a little bit. You know, we recognized, hey, all of a sudden, these policies were put in place, and it was pretty much only white male landowners that were really actually following and being governed by those policies. So then there becomes a recognition that there are groups of people excluded by those policies, and a belief that they should now be included, or a policy should be put in place to consider them, right? So now we go ahead and we expand these policies and move on to, you know, to be more inclusive of different groups and to look to protect groups that weren't necessarily protected under the existing or original policies, right? Anyone in here who's female has to recognize that at some point in time, right, there was a policy that had to be put in place to give females the same equal rights as males. Same thing with people of color as opposed to white people. Move forward a little bit more. You know, I would ask anybody in this room, and as someone who, I don't have anyone in my family or my children who identify LGBTQ, but what I do have is someone in my family who benefited in this school system from policies put in place to protect those with learning disabilities. So I would challenge anybody who is in opposition to this policy, who has a child with a PPT, right? These are policies put in place to protect someone that falls outside of the realm of what the existing policy specifically covers. And I don't think that this new policy is any different. I think that in order to go ahead and effect change, right, you've got to look to put a policy in place. It may not be perfect, nothing is perfect, right? The amendments were exactly- feels that they're excluded or are not covered by an existing policy is just completely ludicrous logic. It just makes no sense, right? Argue for the things that you want the policy to cover, argue for the things that the policy shouldn't cover. But I would challenge that anybody in this room has been directly affected in one way or another, even if you're not by an LGBTQ policy, by any of the other policies I mentioned. And it's just, to be honest with you and be blunt, it's hypocrisy to believe in those policies and to simply stand here against this one because you don't happen to like the existence of the policy or the group of people it's looking to protect.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move on to the report of the chairman. I'm gonna turn it over to Joe for the recognition of the 2022 retirees.
Thanks, Dave. I just wanna just begin by thanking all retirees for coming out. Last Thursday, or last Wednesday, we had our end of year retirement celebration for our retirees. We have 13 retirees this year from Monroe Public Schools. I believe seven are here with us tonight. Those 13 retirees have made it combined 359 years of service to the Monroe Public Schools, and we thank them so much for their, for all their work. I joked a little bit at the retirement celebration, and I apologize Nancy, but I'm gonna say it again. Nancy Zukowski is our most tenured, our most tenured teacher. She's been with us for 43 years. She started in 1979. I was in second grade, Jen, you were in fourth grade. Jerry, you were teaching, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was. That was my first year.
In 1979, I pulled up her personnel file, looked at her whopping salary of $9,800. And I try to put into perspective, with gas approaching $5 a gallon now, gas was $0.86 back then, and still it was probably just as painful with that. So I do wanna publicly thank, I know along with the Board of Education and the Chair, we're gonna come over here in a second, and I'd like to just quickly recognize each retiree, have them come on up, accept their plate on behalf of the Board of Education, which is kind of our traditional retirement gift for each of our retirees. So thank all those. There are, before we get up, there are a few folks that aren't here, so I do wanna give them the respect they deserve and just acknowledge them. This evening, we have two paraeducators from Monroe Elementary who couldn't be with us tonight, Joanne Zakreski and Kathy Romano. Joanne was a para at Monroe Elementary for 15 years, and Kathy a para for 22 years. We have two teachers who aren't with us tonight. Vicki Flam was a teacher at Jockey Hollow, social studies teacher at Jockey Hollow, and then Masick, she spent 21 years with us. And Don Casey was a special education teacher, is a special education teacher, and will be finishing his 36th year with us this year. And then finally, one administrator that's not with us tonight, I think she's practicing for retirement, I think she's had a little trip planned for today, this weekend. Darlene Fensor, who has spent 21 years in the district. Darlene is our current Director of Student Support Services, as you all know. But she had a very unique travels through the Monroe Public Schools, starting as a crossing guard, a para educator, a teacher, ultimately Secondary Instructional Leader at Masick, Assistant Director of Student Support Services, and finally Director of Student Support Services. So I thank all of them for their service to the district.
We do, yeah.
And I'd like to call up the people individually. So in attendance with us tonight, for 21 years of service at Monroe Elementary, Pat Flane. If you guys can stay up here, we'll do a group photo.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have 21 years taught music at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, was the director of the band at both Jockey Hollow and Masick, Amy Grasso. Bonnie Wery. And as I said, 43 years, started out as a math teacher at Chuck Hill, only spent a couple of years there before moving to Masick, before moving to Masick High School. And Julia Strong, I don't know if Julia's here tonight, she made this comment, I think, with Bonnie and Nancy retiring. And by the way, you could never say Nancy, or you could never say Bonnie without saying Bonnie and Nancy, because they were inseparable at Masick. Not remotely surprised that the two of them were going out at the same time, I'm sure it was planned all along. But with Bonnie and Nancy's retirement, I think that's it for people who taught in Monroe Public Schools when I was a student here. So it's a sad day, but congratulations to Nancy Zukowski.
Thank you.
Spending 35 years, all in special education, started out at Monroe Elementary, Font Hollow, and Chuck Hill, and back to Font Hollow, back to Arudes, Susie Cecchellini. We have two administrators, like I said, Darlene couldn't be here, two administrators that will be leaving us at the end of the year. First is Jeff Seymour, who spent 25 years all at Masick. Jeff was an English teacher, a history teacher, I think he chaired the Fine Arts Department for a short stint, chaired a whole bunch of different committees, became our Secondary Instructional Leader a couple of years ago, be sadly missed, also former MBA president, Jeff Seymour. And finally, finally, my good friend, Jack Cecchellini. Jack's dedicated 36 years to Monroe Public Schools. He was a middle school and high school band director. He briefly left the district in the early, I think, late 90s, early 2000s to become Assistant Principal Region 15, before returning and serving as principal of Font Hollow, Jockey Hollow, and then stepping up big time and helping the district, leading through probably the most turbulent times in education in our lifetime, and hopefully forever. My good friend, Jack Cecchellini.
Joe, if I would ask you to take a look at this, it's the July 2022 to June 2023 Board of Education meeting schedule. We do need to update times to 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And then the corresponding meetings.
You got it.
Speaking of meetings, I'm gonna let the board know that we are concluding contract negotiations, so we may have to have a special meeting at the end of this month. I'm sorry, I know this was supposed to be our last or only meeting of the month, so I will let you know and get that posted out right away as soon as we finalize those negotiations. And our next meeting is gonna be 7/18. So barring that special meeting, next meeting, July 18th, okay? If anyone's on vacation, let me know, I wanna make sure we have a quorum and we'll move forward. That's all I have, we will move forward with the consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes from the last meeting? Any discussion on minutes? Nope? How about the warrants? Jerry, you're okay? I didn't know if you, okay?
All set.
Anything on the warrants, approval of the warrants? Okay, I'm gonna move to notification of new hire appointments, number C to Joe.
Thanks. The hiring process for next year is well underway right now. I'm happy to announce that we have three great candidates coming in already that are up for appointments tonight. Derek Flynn is with us. Derek, can you stand and raise and give him a quick wave? Derek is a former Masick graduate and the unicorn we were looking for with the certification in both physics and chemistry. As you might remember from our budget discussions way back in December and January, we talked about adding a physics/chemistry teacher at the high school to deal with the switch to all of our ninth grade students taking biology and the bottleneck that has, you know, created down the road because of certification area. So we are psyched to have Derek, who also just led us through a very successful campaign in Boise La Crosse this year. So we're happy to have him back in town, and we love when our graduates come back to us. And hopefully you'll be sitting in my seat someday too. Not with us tonight, but we're also happy to welcome Iga Lashinska and Jennifer Messina to Monroe. Iga has been serving as our French teacher since the position was vacated in the winter, so it was a pretty seamless transition for her for next year. It's part of our, part of the collective bargaining agreement, is if a position becomes open during the year, we have to, we have to open the position again. So it's kind of a formality with Iga. And then Jennifer Messina will be changing roles with us. She was an interventionist at Stepney Elementary this past year, and she's gonna be joining us as a kindergarten teacher next year. So we're excited to have them.
Hey, great, welcome. Welcome. Joe, I'll turn it back to you for notification of appointments.
Great. I'm also very excited to announce the appointments of Mike Crowley and Marissa Memmely. Mike is our Director of Instruction and Professional Development, and Marissa as the new Assistant Director of Student Support Services. Mike did his graduate internship at Masick way back in the late 1990s before getting a teaching position in Thomaston. He returned to Masick shortly after in 2001 as an English teacher. In 2005, Mike became the Fine Arts Department Chair, 2006, the English Department Chair, a position that he held until 2013, when the position changed to what we know it as now as Secondary Instructional Leaders. Mike was the Secondary Instructional Leader of English Language Arts up until 2020, when he became the principal, as you all know, of Jockey Hollow Middle School, where he's always made professional learning a priority. Mike was instrumental in developing Monroe's vision of the graduate. Really excited for him to take on this next role as Director of Instruction and Professional Development, because he's always been a teacher of teachers, and this role fits nicely into his passion for curriculum instruction and assessment. So we're really happy to have Mike Crowley as our new Director of Instruction and Assessment. And finally, we have Marissa Memmely, who started her career in Bridgeport as a special education teacher in a self-contained therapeutic day program. She came to Monroe, again, another former graduate. She came to Monroe as a special education teacher at Masick in 2017, when we had some pretty significant transition in special education. Marissa stepped up and became a PPT leader while managing a full caseload of students during the 1819 school year. From there, Marissa became the interim instructional leader for special education in January of 2020, a position that became permanent a few months later. Marissa's experience at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school make her a great fit as our next Assistant Director of Student Support Services. So we're really excited to have Marissa with us too.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis? A second by Jerry, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Moving forward to the reports of the committees, our student reps are graduating, not here for this month. So any committees to report? Yes, Nick?
Yes, thank you. CES met June 2nd. We thought we approved the superintendent's contract, but there was a procedural SNAPU with that, and so we will be meeting again tomorrow afternoon to ratify that officially on the books. We also heard year-end reports from all of our department heads, and the sentiment was it was a good year, it got better as it went on, I think that might be universal. Enrollment, however, is up for next year in a very big way across all of the programs. Regional Center for the Arts is up, the different therapeutic day program, everything is up. And there's actually quite a big waiting list at 6:00 to 6:00. So in that sense, it's good. We were also introduced to Dr. Cheryl Karrison. Dr. Karrison will fill the role that I had talked about a couple updates ago, which is a new role. Officially, it's called the Coordinator of Culturally Responsive Practices. This is the role that was included in our budget for the first time that is going to allow Dr. Karrison to develop internal capacity for diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development, but also capacity to create programs to push out to the districts in DEI for PD for our teachers and our staff. And so that will, of course, at a cost, but that will be available to districts who'd like to participate in it. It's voluntary, of course. And she's also joining the STEM PD team at CES. So barring our meeting tomorrow, that I hope is perfunctory and is just to correct a procedural SNAPU, we will meet again in September.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports from any other committees? No? Okay, we will move forward to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I just have one quick thing before Jen comes up to give her special education reports. That's just the end of the year ceremonies. You all should have received an email by now from Terry, I'm sure. If you can just RSVP back to her, we have our two ceremonies coming up next week, the Jockey Hollow Recognition Ceremony next Monday, Monday night at 6:00 p.m. on the stadium field, with a rain date of Tuesday, and if it rains again Monday and Tuesday, it would be inside at, inside of Masick, Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Then we have the Masick graduation on Wednesday, June 15th at 6:30. So note the difference in times. Jockey Hollow's at 6 o'clock, Masick's at 6:30. So once again, graduation for Masick is scheduled on Wednesday at 6:30, with the rain date again being Thursday, and again, it being moved indoors in the event that we have inclement weather on, you know, on both days. Hopefully that won't be the case, because when we move indoors, you know, then now we're limited to the number of family members that can, that can come. I think the families are given, I think, three tickets to come if the ceremonies are moved indoors. So if you haven't had a chance to send Terry an RSVP, please do so, if you're able to come. And I would also just suggest, if our, if the Masick, especially for the Masick graduation, if it's starting at 6:30, like by 5:30, probably safe to be here by then, because afterwards it gets really, the line gets backed all the way up to, up to the town green. So that's all I have for that. If anyone has any questions? I'll just ask Jen to come up. I know, like I said, Darlene wasn't here this week, so Jen's gonna present the special education update.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, so for June 1st, we haven't had any new students move into district. We have three students that were dismissed, and we had 15 students that were made eligible for special education services. So that brings our total to 543 students right now at this moment. And we still are gonna have PPTs in the next couple of weeks, so we still may be adding to that number for the end of the school year. Any questions about enrollment? Okay, so moving on to our year-to-date budget report. We're, right now, we're closing POs, and we are closing our hold funds as well, but we are still spending right now because we have some things that we need to purchase. So I'm gonna go through the year-to-date budget by page, just because it's easier for everybody to follow along. So on page one, we have spent a little bit more in outside agencies, that was for about approximately $2,000, that was for our rent for the community-based program, the firehouse in Stevenson. And then moving on to page four, we have spent about $20,000 more in tuition sped private for placement for students. And moving on to page six, we have in supplies instructional, we have seen quite an increase there because we've ordered some instructional supplies that we need for teachers due to their increased caseloads to help support their students, and also some more supplies for our pre-K programs. And on page seven, we have three lines that we've increased in the past month. We've purchased some software and licensing for our special education students to support them in the mainstream classroom. We have also increased our line for equipment instruction, also on page seven as well, and that's for technical, technology, technological devices that we need for students, especially our incoming pre-K students. We are also buying some extra technology for our alternative students as well. And then finally, equipment on instruction, that line has increased a lot as well because we are funding the furniture for the new preschool program that's gonna be put in in the fall. Okay? We still have a healthy balance right now, we still are gonna be spending a little bit more, so we'll have more information for you by the end of June. Anybody have any questions?
Nick, go ahead.
Two questions. Where is the preschool going?
Two questions. Where is the preschool going? So, you're buying furniture for where, for what space?
So, what we're doing, Nick, is, good question.
I'm glad we're buying furniture. I just don't know where we're going to put it.
So, I think I mentioned that meeting not too long ago that, you know, we're really tight and we're going to, you know, we're going to figure out, we're going to make it work. But, you know, I know we've talked about doing a facility study. So, what we're going to do in the interim right now is we're going to plan on moving the art class up into the conference room at central office for now. So, students will pop up there for art and making that art room, which is adjacent to the kindergarten rooms, making that a kindergarten room, and then taking one of the kindergarten rooms and making that the preschool, the fourth section of preschool.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Right now, we have, we have two preschool teachers working in the same classroom at the moment. Okay.
And art is going to be in the central office?
Up in the conference room.
Really?
Yeah.
For all the grades?
Mm-hmm. They'll just come up. There's a stairwell right there. They'll come up there for the art class and they'll go back down.
I just have one more question. You had called out on page six, the increase in the, excuse me, sped instructional supplies. It's quite over. Is that, is that overage a one-time overage? Are we expecting that next year, the lines that we're seeing that are over now because of the increased enrollment that you had discussed, that they would be over in a similar fashion?
Not that high, no. We have a lot of new test kits that when they came out with the next edition. So, we need to purchase those and we need to buy more than one so that all of our teachers can use them. So, there are a lot of those types of purchases. And there were just some other supplies and protocols that we needed. So, we ordered quite a healthy amount of it. So, I don't foresee it going up that high next year.
So, a lot of it is one-off, but?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, in looking at some of those line items, they jump out at you significantly, but the bottom line is you're still at 88.2%. So, we're okay. We're not going over. We just move some things around.
We're definitely not going to go over on our bottom line.
Okay.
Definitely get a surplus there.
Yes, there will be, for sure.
Yep, that's good news. Thank you. Yep. Any other questions? No?
I just had a question, quick question. With the town buying St. Jude's, is there any way you can contract with the town to use that space for the preschool, possibly? Or no?
Possibly. The problem, we have to really, I think that's where we have to really do a facilities.
Yeah.
Talked about a little bit.
The, the trick that comes with moving a program like that out is now who's the administrator?
Yeah.
Who's the nurse? Who's the OT and PT? It would be way better to keep the kids together with kids and, you know, maybe find space elsewhere for the adults.
Right.
With us. But yeah, that's, that's the tricky piece. We lose a ton when people start traveling and we have OT, PT traveling. Right now, they kind of seamlessly work between the preschool and the elementary. Like I said, you know, getting another nurse, who's the administrator, all that kind of stuff. It gets, it gets really tricky. Understanding it's not a purchase.
I think the point of that is the lease space really for park and rec.
I know.
But we've been, we've been talking about that.
I was just thinking because it's a school.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah. And also the age appropriate, you know, there's stairs. Are there going to be downstairs, upstairs, bathrooms? There's a lot.
Yeah.
It's all in play, but it's all too early. Still just a memo of understanding. Nothing's been decided yet.
No, I know.
No, but you're right. Age level, people don't understand. Kindergarten can't go on the second floor. There's all kinds of.
Right, no, but I'm saying like the first level was where preschool, kindergarten, and there was a bathroom. And it's all fitted for that age appropriate. It has a separate entrance because there's two separate entrances at that school. The right side is where the preschool and the kindergarten was. The left is the main. There's a gate to close it off. So, there's a lot of different ways you could have made it work, but I know it's a long shot.
Logistically, yeah. Financially, it would be a lot more money.
Yeah, we already did our budget for next year or so, but it's, it's all being looked at. And we need to keep looking, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, is it?
That's it.
Okay, we shall move on to old business policies. Actually, that should say second review in the agenda, correct?
Should say second.
That's okay. I just picked up on that.
Mine says policy, second review.
Second review?
Oh, and to see, yes.
Yeah. Is it old business or new business?
Oh, it says, it says both, two different spots.
It's on old business.
It does? Okay. In any event, first, I would like to discuss policy 1120, Public Participation at Board of Education Meetings, which goes along with policy 9320, Bylaws of the Board. Do I have a motion? Nick?
Motion to.
Motion to approve?
Approve, yep.
Second, Jerry, thank you. Discussion. I do have one, one question on this. I liked the way that it was rewritten and done. And Jack, you and I had spoken about this a little, a little earlier. The paragraph under public participation as meeting agenda item, if you go down one, two, three, four, five, six lines, discussion of a specific board member or specific school system employee will not be allowed. My question is on the specific board member, was that meant to be specific student or was that meant to be specific board member? Because I'm just wondering if someone wants to come and speak about a, a compliment or a complaint about a specific board member, this policy is not allowing that. So, what venue would the public have to compliment one of us or complain about one of us? And if we don't allow that venue, we're pushing them somewhere else to social media or elsewhere, which we really don't want to, excuse me, we really don't want to do. Rather hear it ourselves? Or should they be emailing the superintendent, the chair, the board as a whole? So, that was my, my only question on that is if any of you recall, Jerry, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I think it's how you look at it, a glass half empty or half full. If somebody's going to come up, sit there and say rotten things about me and just go at it, I don't know if that's what we're here for. We're here for the agenda. And if they have an issue with Jerry Stevens, then it should be emailed to you as the chairman and to you as the superintendent, and we should address that. But I don't think it should be addressed at a public forum as we're trying to get to agenda. You know, okay, you don't like me, I got it. But this isn't the venue for that. I don't know if that makes sense. I mean.
What is the venue?
I, I think it's addressing the chairman and, and the concern goes through the chairman. But I don't know if we really want to sit here. I, I'm not sure. I, I'm.
Nick, go ahead. Yeah, I want.
Can I repeat? I, I missed. Can you just repeat where you were?
I'm sorry.
This is on 1120, correct?
Yes, on 1120, under public participation as meeting agenda item. If you start with the first sentence, which is crossed out, one, two, three, four, five, six, that's the sixth line.
Right.
It says of a specific board member. Just go, just go back and the sentence starts with discussion. Go ahead and read that. I mean, you know, we're elected officials, so if somebody wants to say something, I, I just.
Yeah, I agree.
That just struck me.
I, I agree. I.
So, do we want to leave it or do we want to change it?
May not like it, but if someone wants to come up here and, you know, criticize one of us, I don't see that as a problem.
I completely agree.
Yeah, and if it's going over a line, then I would stop it. I mean, obviously, but.
Well, the line would be three minutes. Jerry's case.
Well, you give him 20 for Jerry. You know what I mean?
I just think you have to, you have to think about what the agenda is and what we're, we're here for. We publish an agenda. We're here to get to the agenda. I don't mind people coming up and using their 20 minutes. That's what they're supposed to do. I just wish they would concentrate on.
The agenda.
Students and what we're here for. That's all I'm trying to say. I pay, people criticize me every day even when I'm sleeping. I'm used to it. I just want to stick with the agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all my only concern.
Then you, do you amend to bring those issues to the chairman and the superintendent first? So, they actually have the discretion to bring it up?
Yeah.
Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I disagree with my friend.
Not allowed to. That's fine.
I've done it before. We'll do it again. I think that one thing is sometimes when people come up to talk, they actually bring up items that aren't on our agenda, but that aren't on our radar, radar at all to talk about. That when someone comes up and says something, we might discuss it at a later meeting, but we wouldn't have known that. And if someone wants to come and say something about us, they should be able to say whatever they want, up to a line that should be a very high bar. I mean, threats, you know, stuff like that. But barring that, public participation to me is open to any and all about any item they'd like. So, I would, I think that should be stricken.
So, how would you change it?
Just take out board member.
Discussion.
Discussion of a specific school system employee?
Yep.
Just take that out?
Yep.
Jeff, did you want to?
I was just going to say, I think that the policy gives you wide latitude if it's veering off course to either shut it down, shut down discussion or at least, you know, personal comments to a board member.
Yeah. And I know we don't want discussion of a specific staff member in here because this isn't the venue for that. It goes through the chain of command. There's union rights. There's all that, right?
Yes.
You know, or obviously students that would, that wouldn't allow. But do you want to leave it in or do you want to?
That would be your discretion to shut it off as chair.
Oh, of a student or a, or a staff member immediately, I would shut it down. Right. Right. Because this is not, not the venue. This isn't the venue for that. Should go through the administrators. But, you know, of a specific board member, that's, that's the language I'm questioning if we want to leave it in as is or remove it.
Take it out. That's fine.
I'm not saying we have to. I just throwing it out there.
We're elected officials and it's public, right?
Mm-hmm.
Public has every right to come up and say they disagree with something or agree with something. So.
We're making a motion to remove that piece?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, Dennis is making a motion to remove of a specific board member or, is there a second on that? Nick? Okay, all in favor of that?
What do we, what, all in favor of removing that?
Removing it totally.
Yes, removing it?
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we'll, then we'll vote on it. Okay, so all in favor of that? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on the original motion to accept this now that that modification has been made? No?
It also says that, the following sentence says that the board chair can restrict anything at any time for any reason.
Correct.
So, I think what we just changed though now takes out, yeah, that disallowed specifically. So, yeah.
Okay, so.
Motion to accept as amended?
Motion from Dennis, seconded from Jerry. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. 1120 and 9320 passes. Next policy, 3541, transportation. Can I have a motion on policy? Jerry, thank you. A second for transportation. Dennis, any discussion? No discussion. All O's in favor? A, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next policy, 5145.53, transgender and gender non-conforming youth. Is there a motion? Nick? Motion by Nick to approve. Is there a second? Jerry, thank you very much. Any discussion? Nick?
Yes, thank you. I have some remarks that I would like to make. Imagine waking up and looking in the mirror. You know that you see you, but the image staring back at you isn't the true you. Imagine for a moment knowing something about you that other people might think is ugly or is wrong or is a mental illness and attempting to deal with that potentially in silence as a child. This is my story and it is the story of hundreds, thousands of children across our country every day. I would now like you to imagine your child having to look in the mirror and see someone that they don't identify with and adding all the pressures of what it means to be a child or young adult in 2022 on top of that, and it almost seems unbearable. I would now like to address several of the concerns and points that I've heard over the last 10 months and tell you exactly why we need transgender policy. First, I've heard that there have been no formal complaints to the superintendent's office around this issue. And why do we need a policy if there's not a problem? I think that using formal complaints to the superintendent's office isn't the correct measuring stick. There is a problem and we have the data to show that. About 20% of our Massey students identify as LGBTQ plus. And I spoke at the last meeting about the external validity of that statistic by the Gallup poll that was done at the beginning of this year that shows almost exactly the same proportion of Gen Z identifying as LGBTQ plus in a nationally representative and scientific poll. 41% of LGBTQ plus identifying Massey students say they have been the target of LGBTQ plus-based discrimination. This was internally corroborated and validated by the 2021 climate survey where 7.6% of all Massey students said they had been the target of LGBTQ plus-based discrimination. And so, this calculates almost perfectly to 41% of the 20% who identify as LGBTQ plus. 28% of Massey students said they hadn't, they had witnessed, they had witnessed LGBTQ plus discrimination, yet only 3.6% reported it. In national surveys, the CDC found 35% of all transgender high school students have attempted suicide. In May of this year, the Trevor Project, which was quoted, found that 60% of trans students seriously considered suicide in the last year. In their 2019 Connecticut snapshot, GLSEN, which is the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, found that 91% of Connecticut public school students heard the word gay used in a negative way and 68% of students heard negative remarks about transgender students. Furthermore, the Connecticut State Department of Education encourages local boards to pass policies like this. Quote, "While school boards as a general rule have protective anti-discrimination policies to advance the safety and well-being of the student population, school districts are faced with more difficult conversations about how to implement those policies on a day-to-day basis. How do schools allow equal access but respect privacy for transgender and other students? How does a school district apply its dress code for transgender students? And how do schools regulate student use of single-sex restrooms and locker rooms? School boards and school staff must answer these increasingly common questions through policy and daily on-the-ground decisions." End quote. Passing this policy should be the first step in several steps to address these issues. Second, this policy has gone through some procedural hurdles, I understand. It was in the policy committee for 10 months. Policy number 9132, which was a policy that I have written to create a diversity, equity, inclusion committee that I submitted jointly with the policy before us tonight, is still pending in the policy committee. When policy reconvenes in September, it'll be 14 months since that was introduced. Third, I have emailed everyone here individually twice and also publicly said twice that I am ready, willing, and able to talk to anyone who would like to discuss this policy with me. I pleaded with you to help me get to a place that we could come together and compromise and pass this. I even suggested taking out some of the provisions that seemed to garner more comments and were more of the alleged controversial sections and that those could be voted on separately so we could at least get something done. No one contacted me. Even in our dysfunctional Congress in Washington, people at least talk to each other. Fourth, I believe in local control of education. Everything in this policy is or is an interpretation of state law. Cave wouldn't have written it that way if it wasn't. And we do this all the time. We reiterate state law. We just did it in our couple policies that we had, although public participation was changed. We didn't transportation. We're going to do it again in a couple policies after this. Rarely is something in a policy brand new and specifically unique to Monroe and to nowhere else. There are, of course, exceptions. If the argument is that this policy adds nothing new, then why do we have policies at all? We did an eight-page rewrite of our Title IX policy last summer. Why did we do that? Why didn't we rescind the Title IX policy in its entirety and just point employees to Title IX in federal law? The answer is it's important for us to have a local statement on Title IX. It's important to have a local document that our specific employees can read and apply to our local situation. Another example, we're voting tonight to amend our IEP and our special education policy. That's coming up. Why are we doing that if public acts 2146 and 21144 already address the changes we're making? And the answer again is it's important to have a local policy on this. Waterbury, New Haven, Amity, and Norwich have all passed this policy recently. And although there may be one out there, I don't know of a district that has defeated it. Fifth, I've heard many times that an enumerated list of protected classes in our state law. Fifth, I've heard many times that an enumerated list of protected classes in our state law preempts anything that we need to do at the local level. And if this is true, then our policy committee should be looking very intently at rescinding policies that talk about specific protected classes that we have on the books now. Four-one-one-eight-point-one-one-four, racial and ethnic harassment. Five-one-one-eight-point-one, homeless students tied to socioeconomic status. Six-one-four-one-point-one-two, migrant students tied to students of, tied to national origin. We have three separate policies on religious accommodations for students and staff. If an enumerated list of protected classes in state law covers all of this, then why do we have these policies on the books? It doesn't make sense to vote down the transgender policy but to keep these other policies on the books. Finally, regarding parental disclosure, because this one very much hits home. If a student feels comfortable enough to come out and live their truth with a teacher, or a paraprofessional, or anyone in our school system who is a mandated reporter according to law, and that student has a fear, a credible closely-held fear, that there could be potential harm to them at home, then I believe that the school district should absolutely not be forced to out that student to the parents or guardians. And truly, I believe this goes back to the moral and the legal obligation of a school district to protect their students. Our kids are listening. Transgender and non-binary kids of Masick are listening and they are reading about how we act. If you're a student in the Monroe Public School System, and you're out as LGBTQ plus, as we had some very brave members of our community speak tonight, or if you're questioning if you're LGBTQ plus, and you hear what has been happening over the last ten months, do you feel safe in our schools? If you're an LGBTQ plus teacher looking to get into the teaching profession or change districts, and you Google Monroe Public Schools and LGBTQ plus as search terms, or transgender, or gay, articles about this policy are gonna come up. Would you feel comfortable coming to teach here? Would you feel safe as an LGBTQ plus teacher in the Monroe Public School Systems right now, based on the discussions we've had on this policy? If you're not here to pass a policy like this, then why are we here? Isn't it our job as members of the Board of Education to pass policies protecting the rights of our students? As I've said before, ten years from now, hopefully fewer, this policy will pass. And it will probably be shocking to the board at that time that in 2022, potentially, something like this was defeated. As I said earlier in my remarks, one in five members of Generation Z identifies as LGBTQ plus.
One in five.
One in ten millennials identifies as LGBTQ plus. I'm saddened for the twenty percent of Masick students who identify as members of the community, who have to live and learn in a district where, potentially, tonight, their Board of Education won't support them. Anne O'Doy showed us in her presentation several months ago that sexual orientation and gender identity stress and anxiety are part of the increase that we've seen in our school system. Why do we, the Board of Education, want to potentially add to that trauma? It is conversations like these and the vote that we're about to take when trauma can begin for some of our students. And I really want to put a fine point on the potential impact that our vote tonight will have on our community. I hope for the graduating class of 2022 that they will end up in a job in the military, or in a college that has policies in place to protect them and respect them for who they are. If the motion fails tonight, we're telling our transgender and gender non-conforming students, we don't care about you. You don't matter to us. It is a strange case of irony that we're having this discussion during Pride Month and five days before our third annual town pride flag raising. The discussion around this policy and the potential action of this board show us how far we actually have to go in the fight for true equality for all LGBTQ plus people. Same-sex marriage wasn't the end of the battle, as so many had said it would be, but only the beginning. What more could they want? Some media pundits had said after Obergefell legalized same-sex marriage seven years ago, this month. And tonight's discussion and potential vote is a perfect example of that. I understand that society is changing, and change can be scary. Things we don't know about can be unfamiliar and uncomfortable, but that doesn't mean that we don't take them head-on. It is to better society and make us more inclusive for the betterment of all. Don't we want our students to be exposed to a variety of all different types of people to become truly globalized citizens? And to all the students who are watching or who will read about this, never give up. We keep fighting. There will always be people standing in the way of justice. But I encourage you to run for this board if you stay here, or come back to Monroe to raise your family, and be the change that you want to see. I may be the only one without kids around this table, but I'm also the only millennial here. And I'm so hopeful for more millennials and Gen Z'ers to join this board in the coming years. I can see our staff and our students are already taking part in some of this. I walked in and I saw the Pride Book Selection in front of the library. I take note of the bulletin board when I walk into board meetings. I believe it was, last meeting it was celebrating differences. There was a bulletin board about African-American History Month. I was a little distracted, I didn't see what was there today. But I think celebrating diverse people and diverse viewpoints is very important. So I'd like to end where I began. Think about your kids, your grandkids. If you have or had children in our school system, and they came out to you, wouldn't you want them to feel supported? Wouldn't you want to know that the Board of Education, the highest officers in the educational system of our town, supported them? And the answer to that question for me is unequivocally yes. And to accomplish that goal and begin the process of creating a more inclusive school system for all of our students that we have in Monroe, I would ask you to please join me in passing this policy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Any further discussion? No, okay, so Alan, go ahead.
I just want to add that, you know, the policy, there's no breaking news in it. It's already existing law that's on the books. And so basically, this is just a guide for parents and students. There's nothing new in it, there's no new laws. I would just like to hear from the other side. We got an email from a resident, and she was wondering why the people opposed to this aren't saying anything. And I think the point of a public forum is to discuss this publicly, not privately. So if people are opposed to this, I think they owe it, owe the public, you know, a conversation.
Thank you, anyone else? Please, any further discussion?
Dave, I just want to, just, I feel, I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, wherever we go with this, I respect the board's decision to, you know, that's one of your three jobs, is to establish policy, but I got called out earlier, so, you know, I did want to, I think it's important that, you know, this community knows, and especially our students, most importantly, know, you know, that we support them. We've worked with, we've worked with families who have been transitioning at all three levels over the years, elementary school, middle school, and high school. We've done a lot of things, and I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone's aware of that, and we will continue to work with our students. We've had True Colors, which is an organization that supports the LGBTQ plus community, has done workshops with the administrative team to help us, that was a couple years ago. We've worked with the consultants over the years, where we've had students who have, who have, you know, have been in the process of transitioning, and they've helped to work with us with, you know, the transition in the classroom and with families and with students. Our school social worker worked with the Masick staff a couple of years ago, you know, to, you know, promote inclusivity with our students. We've consulted with other districts, we've talked about establishing gender-neutral bathrooms in the district. We have clubs at the high school, we have a long-standing club at the high school that, you know, is an ally to this group specifically. And we have a peer leaders' club that also promotes inclusivity at Masick. I didn't want that to, I didn't want any of that to go without being said, that, you know, no matter where we fall with this, we're gonna continue to support our kids, especially the students in this community.
Thank you, Jill. Nick?
Thank you for the second time. I just wanted to briefly respond to the superintendent's comments. Of course, I appreciate all that the administrative team does for all of our students. I just want to point out that we, the nine of us, the Board of Education, we are the highest officers of education in the town. And, again, I'm fully appreciative and supportive of everything the superintendent just said, but there is something to be said for enshrining and codifying in our laws, which is our policy book. They are our laws, they are our legislation, these items. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, all in favor? One, two, three, all against? One, two, three, four, five, six. Thank you very much, motion does not pass. We shall move on to policy five-one-three-one-point-seven, weapons. Do I have a motion? Jerry?
A motion, weapons.
A motion to pass weapons, can I have a second? Dennis, thank you very much. I'd like to start off a discussion, and again, Jack, thank you for the insight in this. Ladies and gentlemen, so my comments on the weapons and dangerous instruments policy is, number one, Jack and I are gonna look into a couple of definitions that I feel that do not fit the Connecticut state law on firearms and the lengths of knives that I'm aware of. And that could be changed at any point. But my main concern about this policy is that I do not want this policy to be a zero-tolerance policy. There's absolute language and terminology in here that says, any student who violates this policy will be reported to law enforcement agencies. What about making that a may? Or there's other, on the second page, second paragraph, will require proceedings for suspension, will be initiated immediately, must be expelled for one calendar year, which may be a statute item, as I understand, Jack. But I like the language in bullying, which gives administrators discretion. For example, if a student goes camping, and they accidentally leave a very small, you know, Swiss Army knife or something in their backpack, and it's truly an accident, I think our superintendent, assistant superintendent, our principals need the discretion in those situations to handle it themselves with the parents, and not suspend or not have to call the police, depending on the situation. So I just don't want to create a zero-tolerance policy, but would rather like to give a little more discretion to administrators. So we could approve to amend, or we can, we can put it off for further modifications. Jerry?
I'm totally blown away and confused. It is state statute, and it is zero-tolerance, there's no question here. We don't have the right as a board to question this. I thought this was state, said zero-tolerance. You have a parent come in to me with a child, and my own, I went here, my own two kids went here, and there is a knife, which, believe me, there could be, in a backpack, and the child fishing. I don't, I don't think the way this law was written, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have the discretion, I thought this was state statute.
There are certain items in the statute that are covered by statute in here.
Right.
In those paragraphs, the statute is...
Zero-tolerance.
Is dictated. I, the word, the term zero-tolerance, I'm not familiar appearing in the statute, or zero-tolerance in here, I understand what the chair is referring to.
I do too.
But that term is not...
Yeah.
There are, there are, there is a statute that defines certain weapons that...
Yeah, I'd like a clarification on this, because I could swear, way back when I was teaching, this was state-mandated, this wasn't CAE-mandated, this was...
It's my question as well.
It could certainly be reviewed to ensure that where the administration can have discretion...
Or where they cannot.
...it's clear that they have discretion.
That's the question.
Or if there's an area that they cannot.
Yeah, and Jerry, you know, if somebody, God forbid, comes in here with a gun or something like that, that's a no-brainer to me. I mean, we're gonna, you know, suspend, expel, call law enforcement, that's standard. I'm just looking for, you know, sometimes things happen.
I understand.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve, as written, and it's been seconded, so all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, hold on, keep your hands up, please, all in favor? Four, five, six, seven, eight, thank you very much, I'm the one against. Motion passes. Thank you very much, next policy. Five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one, bullying. I had earlier asked a question about if the Title IX coordinator and the administrators investigating these instances of bullying were trained on the laws, because the policy says that they will, if they believe a crime has been committed, they will report to law enforcement, and I was told that they are trained in laws, so I'm satisfied with that. That was my only question on that. Any further, I'm sorry, I should be asking for a motion. A motion on bullying.
Motion.
Jerry, thank you, seconded by Dennis, sorry.
What was your question?
Now we'll have a discussion. Sorry about that. My question is, in the policy, it says that the investigating administrator, if they believe a crime has been committed, they will report that to the police. And my question was, are they trained on what constitutes a sexual assault, or a harassment, or a, because its legal definitions are different than common understanding definitions. And Jack said to me that, yes, they all get trained on that, so I'm satisfied with that. That was my only question when I read the policy.
Were they, were the administrators trained on the legal definition?
Yes, they get Title IX coordinator...
What Title IX coordinators have to be trained.
The Title IX coordinators?
Yeah, so that was my only question. Any further discussion on bullying? No? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Next policy, six-one-five-nine, individualized education programs, special education programs. This was concerning mostly aging out at twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve? Jerry, seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Yes, Nick?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Is there anything in these changes, or in this policy, that is not already state law?
Jack, can you help us with that? I don't know.
Be specific, Nick, there was a change in age, is that what you meant?
Twenty-two years of age, aging out.
That was due to the court case, correct?
There was a change in law.
Okay, paragraphs below, birth-to-three coordinator, concerning special provisions of special, concerning provisions of special education with PPT meetings.
Right.
Is there anything in here that's not already state law?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not, not that I'm aware of either.
So if we didn't pass the changes to this policy that are written today...
Right.
Would we still have to do these things?
Sure, you gotta follow state law, you're a state arm of the state Board of Ed, you don't have a choice.
So then why are we doing this?
Because we have to have a policy to run the school system.
Interesting, thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, that's my answer, you guys can chime in, but...
Well, the policy would have broke law.
I understand the point Nick's making.
And we had a twenty, right, so you have to modify to go with state law.
Good to know, thank you.
Yep. Duly noted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Approved unanimously, thank you very much. Next policy, six-one-four-six-point-one-one, grade-weighting class rankings. Do I have a motion to approve by Jerry, seconded by Christine? Thank you, any discussion? None at all, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. And lastly, policy five-one-four-one-point-two-one, administration of medications. Do I have a motion, Dennis, to approve, seconded by Jerry? Any discussion? Dennis, did you get your question answered on the nasal spray?
I did, Jack had responded rapidly in regards to the, my question was about NOKAN, it only says administration, but, you know, or, you know, NOKAN's done through nasal principally, unless you're in an emergency service, and they have a separate policy to deal with that, so it's covered.
Okay, I want to make sure you got that.
Yep, we do.
Any further discussion? No, all those in favor? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We shall move on to new business. Item A, approval of the 2022-2023 rates, fees, schedules, tuition fees, and facility use fees with a possible vote. Joe?
These are just, this is work done by Ron, Jack, myself, the finance department, just putting together our rates and fees. These get, these get updated every year. We look at, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the numbers stay pretty stagnant, we've made a few little changes here and there. Most specifically, we kind of go with the prevailing wages for custodial overtime and update that every year. So we're, we're recouping when we rent our space out to other people and, you know, outside organizations, and they're paying for it, so that's where we stand now. This is pretty, pretty run-of-the-mill from where we've been the past couple of years with this.
Nick, go ahead.
Sub, substitute teacher and perm-substitute teacher, I'm assuming those are per-day rates?
Yes.
Where, do we do any type of comparative analysis in our DIRG about those rates?
I haven't done one in a while.
We actually, we actually did get some comparative data early in the year because we were exploring options for acquiring substitutes when we were really struggling.
Yeah.
And we, we learned that at that time, we were actually more competitive than I thought we were going to find out. I thought we were, I thought we were quite a bit lower. We learned that we were more competitive than we thought. We do, we do fall behind somewhat significantly to a couple of our neighboring districts, though.
So we're competitive within our DIRG but not Fairfield County?
I, I wouldn't go as broadly as Fairfield County, only because I don't have, I, I couldn't say that with full knowledge, Alan, but I do know that we are, that within our DIRG and within, regionally speaking, you would find us to be relatively competitive. But I do believe that there are, not believe, I know, that there are Fairfield County neighboring towns that do pay, you know, significantly more on a daily basis than we do. And we've also discussed what we may need to do in the future based on other.
We might have to, we'll have to look at this definitely during budget time next year, especially because I think we're gonna be pushing up against minimum wage issues.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I had flagged this last year as well, and so I think that, 'cause I thought it was low, so I think we definitely need to look at around budget time.
Yeah, minimum wage is going up this July and again next June.
Next June.
So, yep. Any further discussion or questions?
What was it last year, the sub?
It stayed, it's, it's been the same for a couple of years now.
I thought we had a problem getting subs.
You know, we've had a, we've had a little bit of an issue getting subs. I gotta be honest with you, in my conversations with both the Southern Fairfield County superintendents and the Western Connecticut, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily a pay issue, because even ones that are paying more than us, like I know Sheldon pays significantly more than us, they, I think they use some of their SFR funds to, to try to attract people, and they were still having a difficult time getting, getting subs.
I'm happy to see our facilities reopened so that they can be rented and for revenue and for the enjoyment of the community, so the pool and gyms and auditoriums, definitely. Get, get the organizations back in here. Any other discussion? No, I'm looking for a motion to approve as presented. Dennis makes a motion, seconded by Jeff. Any further discussion or questions? Nope, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Joe, we'll move on to item B, food service program.
Yeah, this is a really simple one. This just changes the approved signers on the, what is it called again? The EDO ninety-nine, right? The EDO ninety-nine from Jack and I to Sheila and I. The EDO ninety-nine is just the, the healthy food certification that we always decline, but even if we decline it, we have to sign, and say we declined it, so it just makes Sheila and I the signers.
Any questions? Motion to approve as presented, Jerry, seconded by Jeff. Any further discussion or questions? None, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Christine, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Steve.